Good evening and welcome to our Wells Springs Unified Unit School District Regular Board Meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, open, and just for us. All right, first order of business is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Karen, is there a second?
I'll second.
By George, any additions, deletions, or changes? Hearing done, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye or and/or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. General public comment. Is there, if there's anyone online who wishes to speak, you can just type your name in the chat. And... Not seeing anyone, anyone in person wish to speak?
Yes, I would, I'm Pepper Clayton. I've been a resident of town and part-time resident since 1963. And full-time pretty much since 1990. I also served on the school board for a few years. My wife and I are just, we've seen a lot of stuff in the paper recently and have some concerns as to how the school board is trying to be proactive with all the policies that are coming downstate as far as masking, vaccine, and all of that. Is there something in line with what you guys have? Can you give us like a quick snapshot of that? And say, you know, if I was, if I had a grandkid that was going to come to the school tomorrow, what would be the requirements and what would be happening at the school for them?
I can answer, so we're currently following, as we've been since the beginning of this pandemic, we follow the AOE, Borat Faraveld, CDC, the American Association of Pediatrics Guidance and Recommendations. So we have a copy of these that are on our websites. You know, Rick and Liz can also send documentation to you as well. But in school right now, it's really just, we have masks must be worn. That's our recommendation that, you know, staff, students, regardless of vaccination status, we wore masks in schools. We're still practicing, you know, appropriate distancing. It recommends more about building-based procedures as well. But as we're making this shift, I'll talk a little bit about my superintendent's report. We are currently doing what's called Test to Stay. And so with the Test to Stay, you know, in school, as a student identifies as in close contact, if they are vaccinated and asymptomatic, they can return to school. And just with families, just kind of just keep an eye on just whether that develops symptoms. If they're unvaccinated, then they can return to school, but they're taking antigen tests. Right now, it's down to five days. So at the end of the fifth day, then they can, with five negative tests, they can just leave back at school. So those are kind of the base overview of the procedures that we have in place. So there are a lot of other little things, but I'd say to go through every single one of them, that would be for those. Rick, was there anything you had more notes specific here?
Well, we try to follow the guidance from the state. And that's been the background, what we've been following. It's about the safety of the kids, trying to keep them here. And I mean, that's been the ultimate goal.
Trying to keep them in similar pods as best as possible. You know, what that looks like in structured and unstructured times. Just our expectation of the guidance and what that means in our schools. Looks different in every building, just based on, you know, what you have available and staffing and all of that. But we've been pretty successful and we've implemented Test to Stay and we've been able to keep kids in school. So it's been part of our practice.
So my name is Cynthia Clayton, I have been a part-time and full-time resident of Middletown Springs since 1988. This is the first school board meeting I've come to. I guess my concern has been the growing conflict between the various groups, vax and unvax, masks, not vax. Data is continually changing and what was hoped last year is true this year. It's setting up a very, I think, deep divide in communities that has to be resolved with some other solution where both sides are getting their needs met. Right now, by following the state regs, they're not, in my opinion, honoring all the other data from all the other experts regarding the dangers of masks, the dangers of vaccines. So you have two groups with experts on either side, just as legitimate, just as powerful. And so you're, we're at a lot, a lot ahead. We're at a point now where one side is getting their way and the other side is not. And so it seems to me that there's another solution that could come about that would honor both sides. And that suggestion I have in a letter that I can present to you. In a nutshell, my idea for this would be to split the school week up in terms of who's in the class and who isn't in the gym. So that you have the masked and vaxxed in classroom and the unmasked and unvaxxed in the gym, Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday situation. So that you have a separate but equal situation for both groups. So that they don't have to intermix. And that parents who are concerned that the kids are masked and getting traumatized by masks no longer have to deal with that. And the parents who feel like masks are important and they want their kids vaxxed can have that. But the idea of a separation between these two groups until things settle out would be a much better solution than trying to force one group's agenda over the others. So I just see this ripping communities apart all over the world. There's people in the streets by the millions right now. And it is the idea of deplatforming, censoring, everything that's happening is leading to a complete breakdown, just leading to a complete breakdown. So until both sides have their positions honored, it's going to continue to get worse. It's not going to go away. So I'd love to submit to my letter, I know I only have five minutes, I won't be able to read it. So unless there's an opportunity to read it, I don't have to, I can just present it to you and then you can...
Yes, that'd be great, thank you. I can, I can take that letter and share it with all the board members. How many copies do you have?
Just one, as I was planning on reading it, but...
Thank you. Oh yeah, okay. All right, thank you both for your comments.
May I have had her hand raised at any point? I don't know if it's still raised.
I don't see it raised. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? All right, hearing done, we'll move on to the consent agenda. For the minutes of December 1st. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some would.
Thank you. Is there a second? Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Did you second that, Chris?
Sure, I'll second that.
Any changes to the minutes?
I had a question under, where is it? The, you know, the PBIS accolades that were richly deserved by Rick and Liz. Is it professional behavior intervention and support? Or is it positive behavior intervention and support?
Positive.
Yeah, it's written as professional.
What page is that on?
I think it's on like the second page, about halfway down in gold. Under the superintendent's report.
Yep, good catch. Any other changes? All right, hearing done, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes with that correction, please say aye and/or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the warrants should have three warrants in your packets for approval. 202, 204, and 206. Is there a motion to approve the warrants?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Yep. All right, all those in favor of approving the warrants, please say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Superintendent's report of...
Is it a few items?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a few items to discuss today. First, excuse me, would be about the portrait of graduate and strategic planning work that the DRCSU has begun. I'm sorry, we had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was well-attended, I want to thank those, Middletown Springs, Wells, residents who participated, staff members, administrators. Great night, it was nice to talk about something other than COVID and really start to look at education about our students. The portrait of graduate work, it really set around, set in a vision for our SU schools, not particularly around core competencies or, you know, traits or values that we want our students to lead with. Whether they leave after their sixth grade year, their eighth grade year, their high school year. Really kind of, you know, kind of centers all the work that we're doing. So the portrait of graduate is a four-step process. And like I said, our next meeting is next week, January 18th. It'll be a reminder of going out tomorrow to families. But so once we have the portrait of graduate work done, we'll then kind of build back and start to do our five-year strategic plan. And so it's, it's great work, I want to thank everyone for their participation. I look forward to having more individuals join us. I think it's an important part of the SU vision. I know it's something which we've been talking about since the merger, is how do we really kind of bring communities together really to talk about what education looks like and across all of our buildings. And I think it's, the portrait and strategic plan really will take the unique personalities, needs of each of our communities or schools kind of blended into a solid vision and plan for our SU. So like I said, our next meeting is on the 18th. If you're interested in attending, please let me know. This is open to all staff, residents, community members, anyone who would like to be a part of this process. Just reach out to Rick, Liz, myself, or to Christine McGinnis, my admin assistants. A lot of the work over the past month, the December period is pretty quick with the holidays and things along those lines. So it really has been our own town meeting and budgets. Do want to thank the administrators, board, those for their work over the past three, four weeks, kind of getting things ready to go. But hopefully we can get that budget passed tonight and then we can really start to focus on our informational meeting and our town meeting coming up. So the last bit was, I kind of referenced it, you know, during the public comments. As many of you may have heard, there has been a bit of shift in our guidance, our guidance from the states and particularly around the Test to Stay. Secretary French had alluded to that as soon as our SU gets more supplies, currently we have a good amount of antigen tests, we have take-home PCRs available, but we don't have enough to really make this shift. So what Secretary French and Governor Scott would like us to do is shift the Test to Stay from a school-based to an at-home-based. So once we have the supplies, we will send out more information to our families what it's going to look like. Hopefully we'll get supplies by the end of this week. And so if that's the case, then probably on Friday, we'll just send information in terms of what the expectation is and with that. But the definition of close contact, things along those lines would not change. The only difference shifts is the fact that students will not be coming to school. To do Test to Stay, the expectation would be they'd be doing this at home and then would be returning to school. So that's kind of where we're at right now with this guidance. So we're waiting for more information. The state hasn't really given us a lot outside of just part of that shift from the pandemic to an endemic approach in our schools. To really all have for tonight outside of, you know, the town meeting and budgets. So any questions?
I'm sure this is a question that everybody's having, but like, do you have a forecast about when the supplies will come in?
In a memo that was sent out yesterday, it said hopefully by the end of this week. All right, so that is our goal. We do have a good amount of supplies on hand, but if we were to apply or make the shift from a school to a home base, we would probably run out in three to four days. And we did not want to transition to this and then also run out of supplies. I think we just want to make sure we have enough to move forward. I think our schools have done a very nice job of the rise of service, which, you know, beginning of the part of the year was causing a lot of frustration and headaches for our students who had to quarantine or had to, said, oh, because they're close contact. This allows our students to, you know, be back in school, be just, you know, regardless of vaccination status. You know, instead of all of our kids are in school, I think our staff and our families are appreciative of that.
I mean, and that timeline is in line with all of the other kind of testing changes that happen in daycare settings and...
Correct.
That timeline makes sense.
Right, and this is like I said, as it's always been, it's largely based on supply chain. So that's, fingers crossed that we'll have the supplies due in advance.
All right, if there's no other questions, we'll, for the superintendent, we'll move on to the principals' reports with the holidays and stuff. There wasn't a whole lot for a report. So if, if either you have anything to add orally.
First, it's good to be back in school. We asked out in our mid-year MAP testing, which is the three times a year academic progress of the students. So we're in the next two weeks of doing that. Wind sports program is starting the week after next. So I'm very excited that Friends for Education is helping to make sure that any student, whether they want to go skating, snowboarding, skiing, I'm making sure that this happens for all the kids. And really excited that Middletown Springs have an opportunity to be up to date. And actually, this year it's going to be a little different. They're actually allowing more time in the mountain, which is something they have not done before. So it's usually a lesson and then we have to leave. So it's a wonderful afternoon and a great experience for the Middletown Springs students.
We are, I was going to say the same thing about MAPs testing. So we're within the same window of time for MAPs testing. And our GIST program, which is our winter sports program, started on Friday. We had a good amount of students because we had parent volunteers coming to help with the bus, which we, prior to break, we were unsure if we would have a bus for students to access the program. So students who had signed up were able to go. And I just would like to put a plug out there right now. And I know Amanda Whedon, I'm not sure if she's on tonight or not. She and I have been working on setting up Four Winds at Wells for the springtime. And so we've sent the agreement to Four Winds to have them come in. But we're really looking for volunteers to support that program. So if anyone's interested and would like to email me about being a volunteer for Four Winds, I'd be happy to connect them with the next step. So we're looking to get that up and going for our students, K to six, mid-spring, if we can get the volunteers to do so.
Great, any questions for the principals? All right, thank you both. All right, we'll move on to finance. We have monthly financials. If you have any questions, direct those to Willis. And budget.
Hi, good evening. So on the financials first, before we move on to budget. In addition to the system-generated reports that are normally included each month, was also a FY22 budget forecast. The budget forecast look at, looks at our current budget as well as expenses as we know them today. So we put in all the updated staffing. As you know, we budget many months in advance of the year actually starting. So we put in actual staffing, salaries, benefits, secondary tuition, and all other contracted items to try to see where we think we're going to end the year. Since we are only halfway through the year, many of the, many of the items are still at the budget amount for the anticipated column. But those things that we do know where we have either under or overspent are included in there. So at this time, we are, I am estimating that we're running approximately a $45,000 deficit. And that could be found on the last page, page seven at the very last line. Approximately half of that deficit is due to secondary tuition. So additional students and tuition amount over what we had budgeted based on what we knew at this time last year. So my recommendation is that I meet with Liz and Rick over the next few weeks. We take a closer look at this, examine where we have room to either free partially or fully free some lines to try to make up for this deficit and to ensure that we end the year on a positive note. I feel based on where we are in the year and the size of the deficit, we can definitely overcome it and still end in the black. Any questions on that?
No question, just... Just sounds like a good plan, I guess.
Okay. So then moving on to budget. So we're looking at the third draft tonight. On the first page is a summary of changes. And there's just one major change since the last draft. So we met so early in December, at the time, I think it was December 1st. So on the expense side, we were still waiting on some estimates for secondary tuition. Based on updated estimates, at this point, we have received invoices for all schools and students that we know about who are attending any seven through 12 in-state and out-of-state. So we feel like we have a pretty good handle on the estimated tuition for next year. But based on those estimates, we are increasing, estimating an increase of 7.25 students over the last draft. So this is having a significant impact on the budget. And we'll go over those totals in a minute. So that was the only major change since the last draft. The other thing that I'm going to mention is, that's still pending, is vocational tuition. And those are highlighted in yellow on the budget. There's one under revenue and two under expense. Vocational tuition is the tuition that we have to pay for students that are attending Stafford. We know what the Stafford tuition amount is. The piece that we're waiting on is the six semester rolling average that comes out from the AOE. They did send out a preliminary, I think it was last week, maybe the week before, but there was some errors on the report and we're waiting for an updated report still from the AOE. At this time, I am using the six semester rolling average estimates that we receive from Stafford. I believe that at this point, they're the closest numbers that we have. And I don't anticipate any significant changes from those numbers to the actuals that we may receive from the AOE. When we do approve the budget tonight, the Stafford tuitions, when we finally have a budget that's final, the numbers for Stafford or for vocational do need to match those state numbers that we do get. So any, I don't anticipate the changes to be major, they should be minimal. So but we may need to update those numbers slightly and just pull from another line just to make sure that those are matching whatever we get from the state. But like I said, I think they'll be immaterial and won't affect the overall budget too significantly. So looking at the totals on page eight, total expense is up right now by $304,000, which is 5.97%. And educational spending is up by $228,000, which is 4.81%. If we go to the last page, page 11, we can... Let's see, oh, I hope it, I hope it made it into the report. Did the tax rate calculation make it into the report? Okay, great.
Yeah.
Let me just... I gotta just switch to a different...
Page nine.
Okay, my version, page nine. Okay, it didn't make it onto the copy that I have in front of me, but I have, I have it here in front of me now. Okay. So we'll start the calculation with education spending. Education spending is the amount we have to raise in property taxes. It takes our total expense minus local revenues. Local revenues are anything other than property taxes. So it's if we have students that are attending Wells or Middletown from another town and they're paying us tuition, that is considered a local revenue. Any interest income, prior year adjustments, prior year assessment refunds, those all count as local revenue and get subtracted from expense to get your education spending. So right now, education spending, as we said earlier, is up by 4.81%. Equalized pupils is currently estimated at 260.84. This is a weighted two-year average of your student enrollment. So every fall, we take what's considered ADM, average daily membership. And then we send, submit that data to the state. The state takes that data and weights that data based on the level of instruction, poverty, ELL, and they come up with a two-year average for that data and that's considered our equalized pupils. At this time, equalized pupils is still an estimate based on preliminary numbers that we've been given by the AOE. We're supposed to have this number by December 15th, but the state has not met that deadline over the last few years. So right now, we're just working on preliminary data. Education spending per equalized pupils is currently at $19,111. And to get that, we take our education spending divided by our equalized pupils. I would like to caution the board that that number is getting pretty close to the excess spending threshold, which you can see to the right on the tax rate calculation. It's currently $19,977. So that is definitely something we're going to want to be cautious about in the future budgets. Because if we exceed that amount, we need, we'll have to start paying penalties on the amount we have to raise in taxes. So the next step in the calculation is to take our spending per pupil of 19,111 and divide it by the property yield. So when we met on December 1st, it was too early in December to really start the conversations about tax rate because we didn't have a lot of the pieces. Some of you may have heard by now that, so the tax commissioner came out with his recommend- Some of you may have heard by now that, so the tax commissioner came out with his recommendation on December 1st. With his, his proposal or recommendation was a yield of $13,846, which was an increase, I believe, of 24% over the current yield. That estimate was based on a surplus that's currently sitting in the Ed Fund of approximately $90 million. And that estimate took into consideration the Ed Fund using that full surplus. Shortly after that letter was, was sent out, we received notification from the AOE that their more conservative recommendation was to use a yield of $12,937, which is what I'm currently using in this budget presentation. That more conservative yield took into account that the unknown of what the legislators are actually going to do and choose for a yield. Once they start meeting, they may decide either not to use that full surplus to lower taxes or, or come up with other uses for that money. They, the AOE felt that the chances of them using that full 90 million were, was not that high and felt that the $12,937 was a better estimate. As you may know, as the, as the yield increases, that lowers our local tax rate. So we want to see an increase in the yield. So once we apply that yield, we will have a unified tax rate of $1.47, 1.4772, to be exact. In previous years, since the merger, we've had another step in the calculation where we have applied the incentive and then looked at a 5% threshold window, up or down, to see if the districts fell into that threshold. Since this is our fifth year post-merger, that part of the calculation does now go away. We no longer have any merger incentive deduction. So last year, we received a two-cent deduction and then this year it's zero. So both districts will be at the unified rate of $1.47. The next step in the calculation is to apply the CLA. The CLA is the Common Level of Appraisal. The Common Level of Appraisal compares the fair market value to the assessed value of your home. A- as you may know, the, the market values have been going up over the last year, two years. Houses have not been able to stay on the market, inventories have been low, and that results in a decrease in your CLA. When CLA is at 100%, it means the fair market value and the assessed value are equal, and so that would be at 100%. As the fair market value increases over the assessed value, your CLA decreases below 100. And like I said, any decrease in the CLA results in an increase in your tax rate. So the CLA for Middletown is currently at 92.61, and that's a decrease from last year of 98.75, a decrease of approximately 5%. And Wells CLA is at 89.58, and that's a decrease from last year of 94.87. Again, that's, so Wells decrease is 5.58% and Middletown is 6.22%. The tax rate after the CLA is applied would be $1.59 for Middletown and $1.60, almost $1.65 for Wells. For Middletown, that is a one-cent increase over last year, and for Wells, that is a two-cent increase over last year. I know that was a lot of information. If there's any questions, if there's any information you want me to go over again, just let me know.
Lewis, I have a couple of questions. This is Courtney.
Okay.
First question is a simple one. So that 7.25 increase in students, is that as a result of kids moving into town?
So it's, yes, it would be an increase over last year. So it would be students that were maybe homeschooled and are now coming back to school. As we know, last year, we saw enrollments decrease across the state at both the elementary and at the second level, secondary level. So they could be homeschool students that are now in, coming back. Also, we are now paying for religious schools and, and so we do have that as well.
Gotcha. Okay. Second question, um, do public schools qualify for the ERC? That employee, that employee retention credit?
No.
They don't? Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question about if we can go back to that education spending per equalized pupil. You said we're, we're close to the excess spending threshold. Do you think that's going to change at all? Like, how big of a concern do you think we're going to have reaching that?
Well, I mean, it's not a concern necessarily for this year, because we, our budget is set and we're below it, unless you were going to change the budget. The, the excess spending threshold does increase every year, usually with the rate of inflation, necessarily the inflation that you're hearing about these days, but, but usually between 2% and 3%. So we would need to make sure that our education spending is not increasing by more than that percent. One of the factors that we know is out of our control is the secondary tuition, both the tuition amounts as well as the number of students. So we could see a decrease in students next year, but we could also see an increase as well. So that's one of the variables that we can't control, and the only way to offset that expense would be with our elementary school budget. So we just have to be mindful of it, and definitely when we're, when we're looking at positions, whether they're new positions or current positions, we, we want to make sure that anything that we're adding, or even just the cost of, cost of inflationary changes each year that are affecting that, whether it be benefits, the increase to benefits or increase in salaries, that, that those pressures are not forcing our education spending over that threshold.
Thank you. Meredith?
I, I know this probably isn't in line for happening for a couple of years, but if they do the weighting pupils, did they change the weighting of pupils? I mean, what's going to even happen to excess spending? Is that even going to be an issue?
I would imagine it would. So the, the way I've seen it presented, the weighting study would affect your equalized pupils. So it would take, everything else in the calculation would stay the same. In, in the scenario I saw, it was a 12.1%, I think, I believe, reduction for, for Wells Springs. And, and those are, I don't think those are final at all, by all means, I think they're just preliminary numbers. But whatever your equalized pupil number is, it, it would go up by that amount to take into account, it, it would weight that, those numbers more heavily to account for the items in that weighting study. So your equalized pupils would go up, which would then bring down your spending per pupil, which would put you further from the excess spending threshold.
Oh, so that's good, I guess. But I was just wondering how the excess spending threshold would change?
I, I think that's a number in statute, and from year to year, it's just adjusted based on the need.
Okay. And, and we're at least, what, two or three years away from any of those changes? Like, the legislature would have to approve some version of this weighting study, and then implementation going into budgeting would be like, I don't know, is that 25?
I, I would imagine so. I haven't heard any fiscal year dates tied to it.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, Lewis? Okay. Is that all you had for the budget, Lewis?
Yes. So if there's no other questions or concerns or changes that need to be made, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the budget amount. And that expense number is $5,414,147.99.
Okay. Did anyone want to make that motion? All those who approved it, the budget?
I'll second it.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor of approving the budget? Please say aye and raise your hand.
Could you just mention that amount one more time, please, in the motion?
Yep. Five million, uh, hold on a second. Let me show them the right page here.
It's on page eight.
We just wanted to read into the record.
That's a yes. Any opposed? I saw Amanda's hand earlier. Courtney? You're muted.
Aye.
You're in favor of passing the budget?
I approve.
All right. Thank you. Motion passes. All right. So, there we go. We have approved budget. Thank you, Lewis.
Thank you.
We'll move on to contract recommendations. All right. So we have, Suzanne Wagner. I think we're going, we're probably going to need an executive session for some of this. Amanda?
I'm sorry, Eric. Could you forward this to me? Something happened to my GRCSU email and everything is gone.
Oh. All right. Yeah, Chris is doing that now.
Thank you so much. I'll have to reach out to Tech probably tomorrow, I guess. It came back, but it's gone again, so I don't know.
All right. For professional staff, we have Suzanne Wagner for a school counselor. Did you want to add some context to this as far as, I guess, this is a, this is an SU position, right?
Originally, no. So what I'm looking to do is to, I think Lewis stepped off, no, Lewis is still there, so maybe he can step if need be. But where we are right now is due to the way that the position needed to be presented in order to be done for the local budget. The position itself is local to the Wells Springs Board. Is that your question?
Yeah.
The original position was an SU position.
Okay.
On contract looks the way it did. But what I'm asking for is this position to be specific to the Wells Springs Board for the remainder of this year. And then with the budget that was put in and how we built that in for next year, moving forward. But this contract is specific to the immediacy through the rest of the school year.
And Lewis, this amount had already been budgeted, correct? Correct. So we have a halftime counselor position budgeted. Suzanne Wagner was originally a special, full-time special educator. At the beginning of the year, she switched to a halftime special educator, halftime counselor, and now has resigned the special educator role. And so the counselor role, which is a local position, is being moved from the SU to the local district, and it's, is a budgeted position.
Thank you. Okay. So, what we'll do is, if someone wants to make a motion for the professional staff contract recommendation, we will, we'll, we'll do,
Professional staff and extracurricular, if you need to be asking for some?
Yes. Yes. The rest of it, I want to do an executive session. If someone wants to make a motion to do professional staff and extracurricular together, that would be fine.
I'll make that motion for, to approve the recommendations for professional staff and extracurricular, vice president.
Thank you. Third second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Yes. All right. We will die to this later. All right. Town meeting. So last month, we discussed our town meeting, that it would be a hybrid. However, I later found out that because we vote from the floor typically, we can't do it in any kind of virtual format. But I believe that there's legislation in place to do what we did last year, which is to do all of our voting by a civilian ballot. Last I heard, nothing has been official. Just wait, I'll cover your signature. And, And... So I just want to make everyone aware that, in that... Although we did to decide to do it in person, at Middletown, in a hybrid format, we'll most likely have to change that, I guess, to this virtual format only. Yeah, Meredith?
What is the timeline for the warning, then, for that?
So we, we have some time, Meredith, we have until the twentieth of January. So once we have, now that we've approved the budget, we can place it in. We would need, obviously, to update with the board's decision on how to hold the meeting virtually, but if also, if you're going to move to, we'd also need a motion to vote, move voting from the floor to Australian ballot tonight as well. And once we have that, then we can move, include all that in the warning, then. We would then need probably a quick special meeting to approve the warning, and that's... We wouldn't be able to approve the warning tonight because we don't have the draft with them prepared, so.
Would it be best to wait until the governor signs this, these changes, correct?
Just for reference, I mean, Corey Valley has moved their meeting to a hybrid, but they have on the, they are prepared to move their voting from the floor to virtual, just... But they're waiting for the governor to officially sign off. A lot of the other boards are doing that as well, so. But that's kind of why with the warning, we can't, we're not going to officially warn that until the governor has put, penned a paper on it. Everything I've heard is the fact that that will be done, so I'm surprised it actually has not been signed off. But I don't know how many bills were sent on his desk tonight, so.
So if he does that by the end of the week, we can have a special meeting next week to...
Correct, well, we probably just do a carousel with a couple of other boards, just real quick. Just to approve, just to approve the warning, and also make motions to move voting from floor to Australian ballot.
Alright, pretty much same thing we did last year. Alright.
I'm having a signature on the one and two, right?
Yes, yes. We need at least four. Well, we'll figure that out after the warning. I guess the other option would be to... To just do it strictly in person, but I would imagine that with everything going on, that the virtual format is probably the preferred method. What does everyone think?
I think gathering anything more than this amount of people in a room together is probably ill-advised for the next couple of months. Would be my suggestion.
Quite honestly, it makes it more accessible to everybody who's, you know, not on this board.
Absolutely. Okay, well, you know, basically it comes down to our options. I think that once they sign off on the legislation, it's... I think it also is waiving signatures for petitions and all that stuff. There is a deadline for that, too.
For items added to the ballot in Middletown, it's the twenty-fourth. Are those petitions, or have any options?
And I do believe there are separate items that came across the governor's desk or going across about the wave, waving of the signatures and then the co-working ballots, which we don't have to...
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear when the petition deadline was.
The twenty-fourth.
So if we were to decide to remain hybrid for the future, is that a motion we would make at the annual meeting?
No, we'd have to have a special meeting.
It might be something to consider.
Well, you know, seeing as how we're just kind of waiting for the governor to sign off on these changes, we'll have, we'll have to have a special meeting now. And at that special meeting, we could approve the warning and make motion to vote by Australian ballot. I think that's what, that's what we'll try. Alright, so I don't think there's anything we can do to take action on this for the warning, unfortunately. I also don't think it would, but... Another meeting. Alright, is there any other questions or concerns revolving around town meeting? Oh, I actually have one. Are we going to, for the annual report, that we're going to see that in February? So there's still be time, like a first meeting in February, to approve it and all that stuff?
Yes, we have all the documentation all ready to go, just getting first stuff, so that's fine.
Okay, I couldn't remember what the timeline was for printing them, so.
I mean, yeah, so, we will have a, yeah, I mean, I'll talk to Louis about that tomorrow. Once we get the warning worn through, then we should be ready to go. That's the last piece of information we're waiting on to put in there, so.
And, alright. We'll move on to room and board request. Alright, so we started talking about this in September, and I believe it was our October meeting. The board wanted to reach out to the AOB for guidance. I had that response sent out that I received. Did everyone receive that? Should have got it in like a separate email. Amanda, Courtney, I just assume everyone got it, but I'd rather not.
Yes, I got it.
Alright, so I think it'd be good that we came up with a decision on this request tonight. Did anyone have any, well, I'll open up for discussion. Did anyone have any questions or... In regards to the response or the request?
It wasn't very helpful.
It was the least guide for guidance I've seen in a while. But I feel like my instinct is to say that this expense would not be the appropriate of the SU. There are early college programs within commutable distance that every CCG location in the state, the family opted to enroll their student program, not within commutable community distance.
I'm sorry, I can't really hear her.
I was saying that, I mean, I'm new, so take this with a grain of salt, but there are early college programs within a commutable distance from our community, and so the family has made a choice to enroll their student at a program that's not commutable. So, tell me if I'm way off without having that in context.
According to them, this specific program is not available in, within a closer distance. It's a specific electrical engineering program, I believe?
In my opinion, the letter kind of mirrored what the attorney said in the fact that paying for a student's room and board opens us up to future issues of not paying for secondary students' transportations. I know that the letter was very, you know, we do not issue guidance, however, there was kind of a backdoor approach to saying that they didn't feel that it should be.
You kind of broke up, Courtney, at the end there.
I said that I feel, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I feel like the letter, in a very roundabout way, said that they didn't want to issue guidance, however, they feel like it could cause future issues if we were to pay for a student's room and board.
It definitely directs us to creating a policy about this.
And that was, that was my thought. There are toolkits to do that, and my thought would be that if we created a policy, that would, that may or may not help future requests, but it's definitely something to consider.
I mean, not for nothing, he mentions a couple of times in his response to you that he can't read the minds of the legislature, and the bottom line here is the legislature put this together, taking the student out of our, out of our district, and putting them in college. We don't get any help from the state for this student. The other students come to us asking for help. So, in a sense, it's not fair to us, it's not fair to the student, but... And the most interesting thing I found was the sentence about possibly qualifying for fee waivers and grants. And I wonder if they even looked into that, if they would qualify for that.
I did go through the tool mechanism briefly that was recommended, and I found it not very helpful for our specific situation as a choice district. It really talks about, you know, developing a policy as if you were the school and you were expecting someone to oversee this student and getting reports on them and, you know, progress, et cetera. And it talked also a lot about making sure all students in our district have these opportunities, are made aware of these opportunities. It seemed quite out of our scope as a choice, you know, secondary school board.
Well, I would say... There's a lot to be taken into consideration. One thing is funds. Can't go without taking the fact that there's a potential deficit in this budget. And I know it's not a lot for a room and board, but still, it's just, it's something I just wanted to point out that it's, you know, it could contribute to as far as talking about this year's budget, I guess.
Just to clarify in terms of timeline, did the, was this request presented after the student was already enrolled in the program? Or as part of planning for the student to attend the program next year?
So the request came to me in the end of July, and we had decided to, previously...
They didn't come for this?
Not have our August regular board meeting. So it actually didn't come to the school board until September, beginning of September, so. I think there is, I guess, by the family, I need to either approve or deny the request. There's a timeline involved with submitting documentation for it, but, you know, again...
They're currently in one vote, so we need to turn it because I want to know that.
Yeah, and the student is attending, so. So tonight, we'd be looking for a motion to either approve or deny the request. And why?
Eric, what's across the room and board? Do you have a number on that?
Off the top of my head, I think it's around six or eight thousand, I don't quote.
They were looking for a different number that was sort of based on the fact that he was not going to be the student, so we weren't getting reimbursed, but we had budgeted money, so I believe their last amount was different than what they talked about in the initial letter.
Well, I think part of their justification was that secondary tuition sixteen-five or something like that, you know, and the room and board was... Again, I want to say it was six or eight, I have to go back and look. And as opposed to being enrolled in the secondary school, we enrolled at DOC, so we wouldn't be paying that tuition, so we'd be saving money, so.
Just to remind everyone, we just talked about how we were inching up on that excess spending threshold, and you're potentially talking about adding a whole nother stream of expenses for this year and future years down the road. And the only place to be, you're going to be able to cut expenses to offset that will be at your elementary school level.
Good point.
Just looking at the Early College website, under the program overview, it says, "Students pay for textbooks, lab fees, materials fees, and any other costs associated." I would argue that room and board would follow some other costs associated.
Yeah, I'm sure we like to help the young man, but this sets a precedent that we don't want to live with.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about today that our elementary students have to, our elementary schools have to find somewhere maybe a $40,000 in the next couple of months to offset seven new high school students in our community.
Yeah, and again, I think this is an unintended consequence of what the legislature put out there. I mean, it's well intentioned, but it shouldn't be on us to clean up that mess.
I agree. The way it has been presented, I'll say initially, it sounds good, it's something that could be feasibly done, but looking at what, you know, one, the deficit, potential deficit, and these costs in our budget. So I'm also leaning along the lines that we do have to try and be, you know, financially responsible as well.
I think I would make the motion that we would deny the request for some financial considerations. This request appears outside the purview of a high school choice district.
Okay. Did everyone hear that?
I heard the deny the request part, but nothing after that.
Sorry. Based on financial considerations and that this request appears to be outside the purview of a high school choice district. Does that make sense?
No, it does make sense.
Very good.
Is there a second?
All second.
Is there any further discussion? Or questions? Amanda?
Should we offer them any financial aid information? It's kind of mentioned in the middle of the letter there that maybe we should do that. Should we include any of that in our deny?
Oh, you mean the-
Suggested resources for the only VISA and the grants.
Yeah, yeah, and offer that as something. Yeah, they may be aware of it already, but...
So, I guess that that makes me think about, they're not here tonight, that I see. I can send a letter, reach out and contact the family with this reasoning, and include that. Is that what you're talking about, Amanda, or?
Yeah, I guess I just thought, I agree that we can't do it, but I thought, rather than doing nothing, if we could at least assist with the financial aid opportunities and kind of help them gather that information, then at least we're not giving them nothing, we're giving them something. I don't know. Just an idea.
Okay. No, it's not a bad idea. All right. So all those in favor of this motion, please say aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Courtney?
Sorry.
That's all right. All right. We'll move on to your new business, pre-K. So, we had some public comment last month about pre-K, and recently put it on the agenda for discussion, and first part the first part pertains to the motion that was made back in October. And I was just going to read that motion. It's going to be slow. But anyway, I didn't see anywhere in that motion where specifically it was revolved around teachers and staff. It just so happened that it was a request from a staff member. Meredith?
I thought this was like a non-issue. We're bound by the number of students that can be in the pre-K based on staffing, and I really didn't understand why this was brought up. I mean, you can only have so many pre-K students per staff member in there, correct?
Yeah.
Especially if there's some special ed students.
I believe the concern is generally about out-of-district tuition, and so that if I remember correctly, if it, you know, exceeds a certain amount of students. However, from what I understand, you know, our pre-K has always been pretty full, correct? And so, even in our policy, it says that if there's room available, so I don't know how many free spots, you know, there are often, but, you know, I've heard there's been a waiting list, and, you know, if, I would imagine that, you know, this request just happened to come when there's spot available, but anyway, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as the concern goes, the concern was, you know, if we brought in a lot of out-of-district pre-K students, it would increase the class size, and that concern, you know, was, you know, the preference of having the smaller class size, you know, but if we're always close to capacity, it's not going to change, correct? You know, that's just my thought on it. And then, you know, going back to the motion, which, I'm trying to be funny again, because I wanted to read it word for word.
Yeah, I was trying to find it too, Eric, because I'm the one that made that motion, and when I made it, I thought I specifically said if there was room in allowing the student to enter, that it shouldn't matter if it was in or out of district, as long as there's room. So I feel like saying that I think it's only like, what, 21 or 23 kids that we can have, so as long as we're not exceeding that, I feel like it's fine.
Middle of town's friends is 20.
Our license says 22, if we require a third adult, if we were to go over 25, regulations.
Maybe use that one. Three to four spots in a year.
About the same this year, too, still available. Good no waitlist at this time.
Yeah, we don't have a waitlist, so... It's harder to take them, but...
Yeah, and I don't believe that the motion mentioned anything about staff or not staffed, it was just in district or out of district, it wasn't-
Yeah, the motion, I'm sorry, are you still talking?
No, I'm sorry, I was just saying, the way I worded the motion, what I meant it to say was if there was room for a student to attend without exceeding that number, they should be allowed to attend.
Yeah, the motion that we have here in the minutes is to approve the admission requests with the state-announced tuition rate for out-of-district students. So, we did have more discussion around that, and it ended up being the 10 hours of pre-K, and then there was an amount put on that, so, but anyway. I don't recall, you know, having this motion, you know, pertain specifically to staff. And that brings me to the policy F9, which, you know, talks about admission of out-of-district students, and it doesn't say anything about pre-K, but we still use that policy, which is a policy that is up for review as well, and the policy, you know, does talk about, like, our announced tuition rate, but that's a whole other conversation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that could have been my mistake then, because I thought that when we discussed it, that Meredith and I kind of talked about the numbers and being if there was room, so I thought that that was included in that.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, Amanda?
I'm sorry. I was just saying that when we made that motion, I had, I had thought that Meredith and I were talking about numbers and allowing for room, so I thought that that was already included. I didn't realize that it didn't carry over.
Okay. All right.
So I'm trying to remember what the commander said last month, basically wanting to expand that motion and clarify that looking from October, that if an out-of-district pre-K student wanted to come, we would take them if we have room? Like, I think their interpretation was that they couldn't come without board approval, or?
Yeah, for out-of-district, the, that parent would, you know, send a request to the superintendent, and, you know, it'd be approved or denied. If it was denied, then it's, now there it is. Then there's a-
Kind of appeals process in some ways.
That's the word I was looking for.
There's a process for everything, I think. Everything has a process.
So, yeah, so there is a process for this, and, you know, the policy does, you know, talk about tuition in regards to state statute, so it covers our announced tuition rates, but it doesn't really cover pre-K. But again, that's, that, you know, I think one of the important things to keep in mind too is this policy also has discrimination implements in there as well. So, and that's something to be mindful of, is two, you know, we can't discriminate on, you know, race, gender, and then special education needs, stuff like that. Those are important things to consider when we're looking at this policy, so...
Like, in terms of what we would do here tonight, like, do we think that the policy as it stands, even though it's silent on pre-K, is enough, that we would just consider it covering pre-K? And if anybody wanted to send their kid to pre-K from out of district, they would just follow the request channels and be approved and denied and go through the appeals process that exists? Or do we need to clarify as a board that pre-K would follow the same policy as what we can?
Yeah.
Whatever you said, F9 or F6, whatever.
Well, I'll say that this policy has come to the policy committee. And so, because this policy is shared between the SU and all the other SU districts, it kind of begins there, and then, you know, we start the policy review process that we have.
So the GRC SU policy, now the low spring policy?
No, it's all the districts have adopted this policy, the SU and all the subsequent districts. And so, this policy, we would just go through a regular vetting process, and then it would go to the local boards. We did briefly talk about it, and then ran out of time. So it is in the process of being reviewed, I would say, and, you know, to me, it seems like there's work that can be done on this policy, you know, especially to clarify, so...
So would we then, if we do anything, make a recommendation to that group to address this issue in that policy?
Yeah, and I think, well, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Because the policy is currently silent on it? They need to consider it, that's the rule of view. Even if what they add in is this policy does not apply to pre-K?
Well, the policy doesn't really say, it says students. There's no definition that says K through 12, it just says students, so there's no, like, pre-K is omitted from this, so if we classify pre-K as students, which we do, then by definition, it follows this policy. So there are other policies that do say K through 12, and so therefore, because this policy just does say students.
Then I think with that clarification, it goes back to Meredith's point of like, I don't think this is actually an issue, because anybody that wants their student to be an out-of-district student can just go through that out-of-district student policy, right? And I might be missing something, but it seems like it's not actually a problem?
Is there any consideration to tuition? We set the tuition for, in other words, not the state.
And that's, you know, a K through 6 is our announced tuition rate. We have nothing that, you know, aside from the motion that we made, we have nothing in our announced tuitions that is specific for pre-K.
So is that the motion we need tonight to announce our pre-K, right?
Well, I think it's something that we need to sit down and get all the relevant information as opposed to, I don't necessarily think that we have to take any action tonight on this. I think it's just more or less a discussion around the concerns that were brought to the board. A discussion around the concerns that were brought to the board. Um.
I mean, we don't need a motion, then you would bring our concerns to the group evaluating.
Yes, yes. And and, you know, I already, I already did, um, you know, and and like I said, it was kind of a short conversation. It was end of the meeting. Um, and essentially what happens is when we have a a recommended policy, it'll come to the board. Um, and then for a first read. And then, if any suggestive changes, we go back to policy. To be reviewed by the full policy committee. It is a GRCSU policy committee, so there's representatives from all the districts.
Do we do two reads or three reads on policies?
And then we come back the following month. So it it's, there's plenty of time to um to really get involved in. In the policy process. So, uh, yeah. And uh, a- again, I um. And I think that covers everything that I wanted to say in regards to. That motion. And um. Then policy. Anyone else have any? Well, the other half of this was um the playground too. Um, so there were concerns around the the playground and. I uh.
But I may continue making assumptions, but I assume the separate playground is a result of the Child Development Division licensing, yeah?
Of course.
Sure, yeah. So, I mean, that's based on statute under the license that they hold for childcare and. So I think that would be the response. You're smiling.
Oh, you can tell I'm smiling.
Did I say something wrong?
No, and it's like. Yeah.
So, yeah, I. I mean, I think that's the response is. The reason we can have a pre-K is because we have to follow these guidelines.
Yes, um, I was just gonna say something along that lines, but not as well said, um, that. That uh, the uh, the the pre- play- play- pre-K playground is, that there's. Um, there's guidance around that and. I'm not an expert in that, uh, defer that to um our administrators on um. I think uh.
Goodness.
Amanda, you know.
No.
I I think the question around the playground, Eric, and I I might have misunderstood, but. I think the question around the playground was like, if Middletown has a different playground than other. Asking. Why, I I think they were just looking for clarification, like why the preschool had to be separate and was there. Other needs for the playground and I think they were saying they were willing to help us find better equipment because there's a lot of. In the playground. A lot of just like the plastic slides and, so I think that was the question was like. Other area schools have other things, so I guess the question would be like for Rick and Liz. If something else is needed, then that's what we would have to look at.
Think Middletown Springs is is set, I mean, basically, it's the plastic. Plastic exploratory um playthings, um, small slides. Uh, just creative things. So it's a pretty simple playground, but it doesn't need to be fenced in and. Um, barriers and so.
Structure is only so high based on falling woodchip depths. So we, there's a lot of things we have to consider when we look at that. Um, and I know. You know, the facilities committee could eventually have a discussion about, you know, anything that we need to do moving forward, but we are, we are bound by those regulations and we are. Cited on them when they come through uh visits and are expected to make changes within their timeline when they give it to us, so. We have all those things to consider. Um, more than happy to have that conversation. You know, we move forward when we can.
Alright, yeah, I I think that uh.
And if people wanted more information, the Child Development Division has a link to playground safety information on their public website. Which I haven't looked it up closely, but I think that they probably have. Information about that.
And so I guess, um, and and you just kind of touched on it as well, uh, as far as improving anything for the the pre-K. Um. That um, that's something that we can um address and and facilities committee will format as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and and what that would do is, you know, allow us to have like. Longer conversations on on the topic.
Absolutely.
Alright, um, if there's no other questions or comments about that, um. Uh, yeah, um, we will move on to policies. So you have. Five policies, two second reads. And some first reads. Um, transportation, we saw this. It's uh, just kind of cleaned up some of the language, um. Meredith?
Yeah, I have this really general question about policies. Um. When you're um talking about wording, I just noticed um. You're using he, his and her, she and he, things like that. Do you guys ever consider using they and their?
Meredith, that is, has been a discussion. I think that's something which we were looking at during the summer doing the uh pronoun. Uh, adjusting pronouns. So it has been discussed and brought to our attention. Something which we are. Going to take a look at, but I think we're trying to tackle that over the summer when things slow down a little bit. We have time to really. Go through every document.
Okay, I just noticed, it just was getting out in my head in one of the ones that I read and I thought, well, what if they aren't a he or a she? And.
Yeah, it, that was brought up, you know, just the last. Was it just me? Yeah, the policy, um. That was just brought up, uh, the he, she, they, um, format. So as we, as we move through these policies, I'm sure that will be a uh.
Great.
A focus, so. Uh, weapons and firearms, uh, this previously was a. Just a firearms policy. Um. I I think this was a. Pretty well laid out, so. Alright, and then the other three are first reads. Um, if uh. Anyone had any suggestions for the policy committee on the 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 three first reads. Um. Now would be the time to bring it up. Um. So that way we knows if it goes back to policy or not. And we would need a motion tonight. For transportation and weapons and firearms.
I got both of those?
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I saw, I mean, let me approve the second read of the transportation and weapons and firearms.
Change that to adopt?
Adopt, yeah, that one, that one.
Is there a second?
All second now.
Motion by Kara, second by George, uh. Any other discussion on these two policies? Alright, here none. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Any notes? Oh, there we go. Uh, motion passed is unanimous. And then we will see. Alright, um. Uh, we do. Need a quick executive session. Um. Before we do future.
Can we talk a little bit about the first read of the other three policies?
Oh, yeah, I thought no one had any.
Uh, so just. In light of the COVID world, is there language about, um. Like, we want parental involvement, we want volunteers, we want work-study students. Should, is it worth having language in there? You know, something like pursue it to public health, maybe for following the guidelines of something.
I mean, we we could throw that in there.
I mean, I don't, I don't feel strongly about it, but just. I feel like, you know, going back to the public comments earlier of like. I'm not a person who attends sporting events, but I know that parents not being able to attend sporting events. Was a really big issue for a lot of people. And we were saying it's because of health and safety, we're following health and safety guideline. Should it reside in, at least maybe in somewhere in parental involvement that we want you here, we want you involved. Well, we're first and foremost going to follow health and safety guideline. I mean, I don't want to think we're going to be in COVID forever, but I also. It might be good to codify it in the policy. Sometime. That was like something I was shy about.
You're talking the specifically the parental, just the parental?
More parental involvement, but I would say what volunteers and work-study students as well. Um. Just like. If we're saying that we want to create pods of people, having outside people come in and out. May not be within health and safety guidelines, which is, I'm not saying it should be in there, it shouldn't, I'm just saying. It it's worth a discussion, and it's probably codified in other places, but should it also be mentioned?
Amanda?
I just had a question for Chris that goes along with the question that was just asked. Um, Chris, do you think that the current COVID guidelines that we have in place? Kind of overrule our policies anyway because they're. Global pandemic guidelines that were being made to follow, or do you think it needs to be included in our policies?
So I I didn't get to the second part there. So. After, can you repeat that, please?
I'm sorry, I have bad service at home. Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, you.
I I was just wondering if you felt like the current COVID guidance that we've been following for the last two years, if. If that guidance kind of overrides our policies, being that it's, you know, guidance that we are being made to follow? Or if there is a reason that something should be included in our policies?
Well, I I think the the guidance that we have followed is from the AOE, and about the Department of Health, which are state agencies, so I think it. Falls right in line with our our policies. Um, I think that's with um, you know, with what Kara is suggesting would. Wouldn't change the policy, but would just give us, you know, kind of a more clarification that, you know, while we. Want parental involvement, we want, you know, volunteers, we would like, but obviously that's pursuant to. Conditions that's that's outside our control, so. But like you said, I I don't think that the the, the uh. The recommendations and the guidance that we receive from the uh AOE Department of Health. Uh, are in conflict or with our policies, and they are things that are third in line with them, so.
Yeah, I I just didn't know if they, if the the guidelines would kind of. I guess override, for lack of words, like if they would automatically go hand in hand with all of our policies without having to include that wording.
Right, well, I mean, right, and I I. I think you you make a case for both. I think as Kara said, it's one where, you know, for discussion, I I I can say in one, uh, you know. Two years, I I haven't had any parents come to me and say, well. According to. You know, H one, you know, I should be allowed to attend the basketball game like last year. They weren't saying, I mean. Understanding that, I think they understood the conditions of what we were dealing with, particularly on the state of the emergency, but. Um, I do think there are things that shift and change. I think it's a lot, etc. Our parents are very. Understanding to a certain extent about uh certain conditions. Um, but um, yeah, I mean, I think it's something which we can bring back to discuss. Um, to our our committee and just.
I mean, and as we're moving from pandemic to, I think we've been saying this endemic. Eventually, the guidelines. From above will. Start to defer more to local boards again. You know, if you're reviewing it now, is another time to add something? I don't know. It's an, I don't know.
I I don't, oh, sorry, George. I mean, under implementation, if they were covered well enough, where it says the superintendent shall develop administrative rules and procedures. To ensure that volunteers and and work-study students are appropriately screened prior to entering in the service. I would think that those. Rules and procedures are not written in stone like this is the only way to do it. We have a health emergency, so these rules have changed a little bit.
So perhaps that language that's in the margin where somebody got screening and what have you could be added to the parental, like creating administrative rules?
And and that kind of leads me to, um, you know, something that I I I wanna. Kind of just caution that, you know, the the policies that we have, a lot of them are model policies.
And they're kind of broad.
And, yeah, and so. When we start getting into wordsmithing, specific things, uh. The policies are meant, um, you know, just to establish and and provide guidance as well and an understanding. Um, not not that I'm against putting something in there for health and safety guidelines, but. Um, it, you know, we start piling on a bunch of stuff in the policies. Um. We are still working through policies. Um, you know, that were adopted back in two thousand eighteen. Um, so. I just, um.
Yeah, I mean, and I absolutely would be fine if no language was included at all, but just. Making sure that, you know, a discussion was had with all, with all, I think.
And and the and the procedure part too, you know, the procedure part is, like, again. And these go for all the procedures that are associated with policies. That's why the procedures are not in the policies. And the ones that are, we're trying to get out of the policies. Um, you know, quite simply because. Um. You you put something in a policy and then it changes.
Right, I mean, but like, it took a vote of this board to allow Chris to make administrative policies about COVID. So like, should the language about him being able to make policies? Add to policy? Because that's not.
Well, it says here, he he will make rules and procedures.
Right.
To address this.
And that probably covers it?
I I think so. I think so.
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't make policies. We make policies.
Rules and procedures.
Yeah, and and these these procedures um are are basically given to him by our policy to say that. You know, I mean, if we struck that line out and say, no, we don't want him to make the procedures, we want to make the procedures, it'd be a whole different scenario, but.
So I'm not advocating one, we're just having a discussion, um, but other than that, the, do you want, um. Does first read require a motion? Send it back to the committee. Okay? Thank you.
Nope, we'll just write it down and send it back to the policy committee. And then it'll come back. Okay. Alright, so, um. Future meeting dates, um, and agenda items. Uh. So our future meeting dates are on there. We're we're definitely going to need a special meeting for the warning. Um. That's what I was going to ask, um. Next week, um. Well, Monday not a possibility?
Okay.
Okay, um, so. The nineteenth? Does that not work for anybody? Okay, um, so the 19th, does that not work for anybody? That was easy.
Sounds like it's 7:55 and people are ready to be done.
6:00 P.M.? Yeah, I would, I would say the same time. And then eluding, um, it says Middletown Springs on there, but, um, it will most likely be virtual only.
So, so we're not going to be having our regular meeting in February?
Uh, I assume we would need to, um, especially to approve the, um, presentation.
Okay, I just didn't see it on the agenda.
Well, yeah, I haven't gotten that far yet. Because we're, we're talking about a special meeting next week.
I guess it's just not on there.
Yeah, uh.
Sorry.
For, um, and that's what I, uh. And then, and then we have our regular meeting on February 2nd. Yeah. Two, two?
I believe one of us set the calendar, there wasn't a date for it outside of 12:30.
Okay. Well, I think, I think some boards are skipping that meeting.
Core values haven't therefore been before information, we have 22nd, it's company, you know, starting.
I think, uh, I don't think it'll be a long meeting, honestly, but, um. I think we could rather, rather have it and then not need it than not have it. So yeah, the February 2nd as well, so. And the, um, agenda items for, um, February 2nd. Okay.
On the 19th, is this accurate?
Yes.
What time is the annual?
Seven.
What time did you say it was?
Seven, for the annual meeting?
Yeah, I have 6:30 down, I don't know why.
Thought it was seven.
Glad I asked.
I don't know why I have 6:30, it's just what's on my calendar.
Yeah, that's why I thought it was seven. Well, I got last year, we're here, the seven.
Yeah, it's fine, it's my issue. It will be on the morning.
Yeah, I know. It'll be set in stone next week. Okay, all right, so, uh, we, we do need a, a quick executive session. If we can't, we will invite, um, Lewis, um, to come. And, um, we don't need the principals for this, obviously. So we need a motion to, um, move into executive session for personnel.
I'll make that statement, Amanda.
I'll check.
All right, so we're out of executive session at 8:44 by consensus. And the next order of business is to, um, approve, uh, contracts. That we discussed.
Uh, I would move to approve the contract as presented or as, as discussed, which is correct for.
For our administrators?
For the administrators, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion, Amanda?
I just wanted to clarify.
But we're not going to clarify what it is that we discuss.
So we're.
This is why I wanted to.
Yeah. Which is why we have the executive session, so, okay. The, the motion is, is to approve the, the administrative contact contract recommendations as, um, presented and discussed. Correct?
Correct.
All right, uh, so we have a first and a second, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, uh, motion passes unanimously. Okay. All right, uh, we covered future meeting dates and, uh, you have the agenda items. So the next order of business would be to adjourn.
Can I move? Is that good?
Yep, is there a second?
Also, Amanda.
Thank you, um, we're adjourning at 8:46. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you, everyone.